Calling the meeting to order at six o'clock PM. This is the Board of Directors' regular school board meeting for Monday, September 26, 2022. Welcome to all our visitors, guests, and media. We're going to start tonight with the board administrative roll calls. Mr. Felth, here. Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Getzko?
Here.
Ms. Danielson?
Here.
Mr. Getzko?
Yeah.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mr. Henin? Mr. Gertan?
Here.
Ms. O'Connell?
Here.
Ms. Gronseth? Ms. Dimpler? Mr. Veal?
Here.
Mr. Samansky?
Here.
You're going to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up on the agenda is public comments. We have not received any at this time, so we're going to move on to our first discussion and action item, a motion to approve the agenda and addendums.
So moved.
All second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Ms. Getzko. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up, item three, the consent agenda, which includes the school board minutes for the regular board meeting on August 22, 2022, the personnel consent agenda, and the business consent agenda.
Move approval as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Tonight, we do not have any recognitions, presentations, or showcases, so we're going to move on to our first action item. The first and only read of the district policies requiring review. Superintendent Schuler?
Yes, Mr. Chair. At this time, we are requesting a first and only read of policies, the 200 series. These are mostly board policies. But again, no substantive changes at this time, or legal reference changes at this time, so we're requesting a first and only read.
Move approval as presented.
All second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion on the 200 policies? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up, item B, the 2022 payable 2023 levy certification. Ms. Rader?
Good evening. It's time of the year to certify our levy. I'll go through all the components of the levy for the three different funds, and I'll explain any big increases or decreases of the levy. So we'll go to the general fund. The first three sections are equity, local option, and the referendum. Equity was pretty consistent. The main change was the adjustment amount. If you guys can remember, the adjustments are, we're basing this levy on data in the future, so every year that they go back and they say what you levied for, and then they balance it to really what you had for pupils and all the numbers that they have, so there are always adjustments. So last year's adjustment was larger than this year's in equity, local option, and referendum. No, just in equity and referendum. And the referendum increase, when we did our referendum, we did do an inflation factor, which that is the increase for the referendum. So the next couple components of the levy is operating capital, long-term facility maintenance, safe school and abatement. Again, pretty much all of those components are very stable. Again, the adjustments do play a little bit in there, but other than that, it's pretty stable. And the last couple sections of the general fund levy is career tech, lease levy, and the reemployment. Pretty stable. Again, the adjustments come into play. The reemployment, we have not had to have any unemployment claims through COVID, so we are starting to get some of them, so we will see a little bit of movement in the unemployment in the next couple of years, I'm forecasting. So basically, the general fund levy did increase about 7.8% for 200 You have the wrong one, I think. Go up.
It's 21, 22.
No, it's 22, 23. I think you have the wrong.
That's the one I was linked in the deck.
Yeah, it was the little link that we had.
That is not the right one.
I was wondering why we were looking at 20, 21.
Yeah. Yeah, this is not the right one. Just a second. Let me get. To Darren?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We're going to start over. Sorry about that. I don't know why.
I don't know why it didn't stick. It's probably my turn.
No. But I'm going, wait a minute. One of these things. Again, I apologize for that. But I was like, not giant. I didn't even look at the date.
Not yet. There it is.
You got it?
Yep. Thank you.
There, that's today's date. Let's not go back in time. Okay. So, pretty much everything I said, I was saying for the numbers I had in front of me, not on the deck, so everything I said was correct. If you can go one more page. To the end. Oh, now you're in debt service. Back to, there. So we did have an increase of $225,572,000, which is about a 7.8 increase from last year. I don't know, do you guys want me to go through each slide again? Because what I said was correct. It just wasn't, you probably were going, what are you talking about? If you have any questions, just let me know, but if you have no questions, we'll go to community's, community service. The basic levy, the youth service, and the after-school are based on our census numbers, so they're not going to change for the next probably nine years, except if we have an increase in our census, and then we submit that to the state. So those are going to be consistent. The biggest decrease in community service is our school care, school age care adjustment. Last year it was 28,000. This year it's a negative number, and also the amount that we budgeted for was a little bit less than the previous year. If this does not, if it's not true, and we end up having larger than what we budgeted, it will come through as an adjustment. So we do have a negative $60,000 adjustment. And the last couple components of community service, early childhood, home visit, and abatement, they're very stable, so the total decrease of community service fund balance, not fund balance, levy is 57,000, a negative 19.88% decrease from the year prior. The last fund that gets levy dollars is debt service. The basic levy is paying for our principal and interest of our bonds and 5%. The debt excess is MDE's way of controlling that 5%, they don't let that fund balance get too large. So we do have an increase in the debt excess reduction or adjustment of about 40,000. And then the last two components in the debt service is abatement and LTFM. They're very stable. In whole, debt service did have a reduction of about 15,000 or .34%. The next slide shows the amount of levy revenue based on each fund, our fund. So the general fund, what we're certifying tonight, is only 15.8% of the 21 revenue. In community service, it's 17.2%, and debt service, it's 90.2%. So for general fund and community service, it's not a lot of the revenue that we do receive. The next slide shows a seven-year history of what the changes have been in our levy. The last two years, relatively stable, 1.1, 1.16, a negative .13, and then this year it's 2%. So we are fairly stable, which is a nice thing. One thing I did want to mention that's not in my slide deck is this year, with your tax, your tax statements, there's going to be a supplemental information, and the cities, the counties, and the school districts need to supply budget information. But because our timelines are different than the county, we're not done with our audit, so I can't submit final 22 numbers of what we actually did. So you will see nothing on our information, and it will say that the timing of the districts, what, I have the exact language. School districts have different timelines for financial reporting, and this information was unavailable at the time of printing. Please contact the district for this information. So the information that they're asking for is the revenue and expenditure budget that we always do after our audit. So we will have that. I think by law, we have to have it done two weeks after our audit, so we will have that, and if anybody asks for it, it will be on our website. So just in case you get questioned, like, why didn't you guys submit it? There is a reason. So then the last slide is just asking the board to approve. Right now, we always approve the maximum levy amount, because MDE could do some adjusting from now till we certify, or final certify in December, so that allows those adjustments to be able to happen. So the general fund, again, as I said, it's increased 7.8%. The community service fund went down 19.88%, and the debt service was reduced by .34%. In total, the total levy went up by 2%. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, if you could go ahead and refresh your agenda, although you've been attached, I made the correction.
You beat me to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to make sure it was updated.
Yeah, I did it. It's there.
So Ms. Rader, what we're doing tonight is certifying the maximum amount, but then a true amount will come at the December board meeting.
That is correct.
With any correction, so it's just going to have those numbers and the updated
Correct.
certified numbers, okay.
And our levy has been constant for the last couple weeks, so I don't see any changes.
Minor up and down.
Yep.
Nothing of significance, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the 2022 payable 2023 levy certification as presented.
All second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Schultz. Any further discussion?
Do we need to note that it's maximum, or that's in there, so I think we should be?
It's in my slide deck.
Language.
Yep.
And also what the chair signs. It also says that, that we're doing the maximum.
Just wanted to make sure that we're clear on that.
When I send my wife away.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up on the agenda is the bond referendum and project updates. Mr. Vogel, welcome.
Thank you. I'm starting with kind of our hanging, or projects hanging out there. So I lumped together the middle school, high school, and elementary, simply due to the fact that there's not a lot of lists. As I mentioned last month, we were kind of approaching, or we would be approaching in the time period, our warranty work dates of, we'll call it expiration, for the contractors that we contracted with to finish that work, and they have not. So I've issued them letters stating that we're bringing in other contractors to do the work. I've received most of the the numbers to get them moving, and we're waiting on a few more just odd-end materials. And most likely, we'll just bring in crews over MEA and tack all those items, so we're not disrupting school during that time. Just a general update, as far as items that were complete, we did have, right before school started, we had our fire alarm system upgrade was fully finished at the middle school and high school, so that's all operating on one panel with the new voice evacuation system. And then we are, we did also complete the gymnastics divider wall, so that is up and operational as well. As far as our Braun reports, I just spoke to Braun, actually, this afternoon, and it sounds like our analysis with their kind of scientific office should be complete this week, and then they should be issuing their report next week for both our tile and marmolium failures throughout the middle school. So getting closer to coming up with the resolution, I know that the the installer also asked for a third-party investigator to come out to kind of help with their side of items as well, because what they're being told from the manufacturer is, they've kind of changed their mind from what they were originally told, so essentially, we'll have both, I guess, Braun's report and our third-party report in our, in our argument to the manufacturer on either replacing that floor or fixing it the correct way, so. For our 2022 projects, so I just, with the middle school district office, obviously, we are moved in and occupying that space. We have a few punchless items to correct, but they should be done so here, actually, in the next week or two. We had to order a new glass piece for the secure entry, and then there are some kind of odds and ends hardware items that just changed direction while we were changing contractors, essentially, so I'm working with the school to make sure that we're squared up on the district office side. But our middle school secured entry is, is up and operational. For the locker room projects, the pool locker rooms is a couple days away from handing back over to the teams and athletic side, if you will. We've had our epoxy flooring and epoxy walls get installed. All of our new doors and hardware were hung and installed, or are being installed right now. All of our partitions, toilets, plumbing, all that fun stuff was pretty much finished installation last week. So we have a punch list scheduled with the architect tomorrow to recognize any issues of repair or that need replacement, and then hopefully by Wednesday, at the end of the day of Wednesday, we're turning that over for use. And then with the middle school locker room, they are completing the epoxy walls right now in the shower areas. They're hanging all the rest of the partitions and benches, and finishing out the plumbing items then after the epoxy walls are complete. So the scheduled turnover date for that space would be next Wednesday. So we'll have punch lists scheduled for next Tuesday, walk it with the architect and engineers, and then turn over that space by the end of the day next Wednesday. For the lockers in those spaces, I did get an update that the metal lockers for the middle school are actually supposed to arrive on the 13th of October. So I'm working with the contractor to either come in on a Saturday before MEA or a Saturday right after, because over MEA break, we're going to be finishing the, we'll call it the second color, or the yeah, the second color within the locker rooms. So right now, the way that the epoxy floor will look in the locker rooms is in all the wet areas, the bathrooms will have the finished product, and then the general areas where the lockers are is just going to be a concrete floor until MEA. So they just, they needed a curing time independent of each other, so to allow the school to use those as we get them available, we're going to have kind of the finishing color be installed over those four days in MEA break. Outside, for the site improvements, so in the last month, we've had all of our curb and gutter be installed along with all the concrete sidewalks. Electrical conduits have all been ran to all of our new light poles, and the light poles are actually going in this week. Over the last, I would say, probably week and a half, they've been working on our retention basins, so our kind of our holding ponds, both on the west and the east side of the school, and they're actually putting in their riprap and, and kind of top mixes in those today and tomorrow. And then right now, pavement tolerances are scheduled to begin tomorrow, and pavement going in on Thursday and Fri, or excuse me, Wednesday and Thursday of this week. So right now, the striping schedule is a little bit tight with homecoming, and so we're kind of going to play it day by day. But worst-case scenario, we'll have a fully paved lot, just no striping for the time the game comes. If we're able to squeeze it all in, then it'll be essentially fully complete by the time Friday evening rolls around to utilize that parking. Corey Avenue's been pretty much wrapped up since the end of August. There's most, I think there's four punchless items open on that project, and they're all due to, to kind of seating and seat establishment, so those will, those will hang out until spring. Schedule I left since last month, it's pretty much unchanged. Obviously, entering into punchless items for punchless periods for our 2022 projects. Our stadium is the only one that will have that kind of spring punch list for, for next spring, our stadium and site work projects, so. Budget-wise, we are getting down there, so we've had about a million and a half in the last month between the two projects go off for pay apps, fees that have been expenditures, and then essentially, our contingency will get reallocated if there is any left with, with other LTFM projects that we've satisfied, so if we don't end up spending that down, it'll get redistributed through, through other projects that we've already completed, so. I think that's it. Any questions?
The secure entrance at the elementary school, where are we on that?
So I have one more quote to receive. We did a kind of accrued design through the architect, so that, trying to escape any additional fees from him. And then I sent it out to three different contractors to complete the work. Our only, really only lead time with that is just, we're going to put a solid surface countertop in there, but as soon as that gets in, we can construct it. So I have, I have two quotes, I'm waiting on a third, and then we can order the materials and get it constructed.
Just two more questions. Then, the striping on the, for the parking lot in the middle school, will that affect staff at all? Like, will they have to evacuate the?
So right now, it's just striping the new lots, which, so they shouldn't really
Got it.
Essentially, they wouldn't really be using it, so it shouldn't really affect. There is, there's, I think, four, three stalls in every bay of what we added on to, but, but right now, it's, it's in addition to what they're using. So it shouldn't, shouldn't have too much of an impact for staff or parents, really.
I guess one more, or two more questions. Did we do a concrete or like a pad of some kind for like the, if that's supposed to be out there? Was that?
Oh, that was by the practice field.
The porta-potties.
Yeah, the porta-potties. Did we do that?
That's in the actual
In the stadium, or no?
No.
With the practice field.
By the practice field.
Up by that trail.
By the lolly.
We had talked about that way back.
Yeah.
By the detention basin.
Used to be by the big oak tree.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we had anything on plan, but I could quick squeeze something in, just where that one is sitting right now, by the big oak tree.
Yeah.
Is it the spot we're talking about?
Yeah.
I mean, it could be moved somewhere else.
Yeah, I think we just kind of, once the final grade is done, we're going to kind of have to reassess to see where the I know, I remember the conversation of putting a pad down there, so it would be a nice accessible, plus there will be a trail that runs along there.
Right.
On the base of that JV football field, all the way up to the JV baseball field, so we'll just have to kind of see where that goes and how that would fit, so.
Yeah, I know that, as of, as of right now, we don't have any Yeah, I, I know that as of, as of right now, we don't have anything on plan. We do have an ADA path, like Darren was saying, that's going to run essentially along the eastern edge of our parking lot and then it cuts over to the, the JV baseball bleachers to give wheelchair access out there. It also, it actually runs into both dugouts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it'd be relatively easy to, to add something to that. Um, you know, we can, we can definitely like prep the ground and, and just have it-
Yeah.
Ready.
Yeah, I think we should.
I, I think we should have something on it.
When we enlarge that retention basin too, that kind of changed a little bit of the-
Sure. Yeah.
Land there and the way that lays, so we'll have to take a look at that and see.
Sure.
Even if it's one of the big ADA ones, BIFs out there, you know, if we could fit that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just one, I mean, you don't need multiple, but.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, that's pretty simple. I, we have, even if we do just a small concrete pad, we have plenty of guys that could come do that too.
And then, um, the last thing I just wanted an update on was the, uh, uh, visitor's side bleachers, like the, like a cover for the-
Screens.
Yep, yep, I did reach out to Tim Tobin, who's the, the company who we ordered all of our new bleachers through, um, and he's working on a price for like a, basically to mirror the same screening for that visitor's side.
Okay.
Should be kind of secure and or, you know, stop balls from heading in there, that type of thing.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
If you go into there tonight.
Yeah.
Last piece too, is we are going to put up some temporary signage, um, uh, this week. It should be going, yep, it's kind of the banner variety, so, um, Mr. Gert and I were out there with the sign guy, uh, last week and we identified what spots to put them in and he was going to come out this week to start installing that, so, yeah. Come opening day of the, of the new entry, there'll be signage to, to alert parents and obviously we're putting out communication in multiple ways to let parents know that it's open, so.
Is that just signage for the new middle school entrance or is that also including signage on like where to locate specific fields?
Yeah, this is just the new entry, just so people know where to exit and where to enter and then we're working, uh, on the other signage as we speak, so. I don't know, hopefully it'll happen yet this fall, but we'll see.
Yeah, do you know if we've heard final determination yet from city on that stuff?
No, last we had heard that they had not expressed interest either way, if they're interested in joining us. The idea was to combine with the city on naming the fields, so the school fields and the city fields to make it one kiosk, if you will, but we haven't got a commitment yet at this point in time. Probably good time to circle back with them and see where we're at, so. We'd even share the cost potentially and, so.
And then just for, for that signage, we did explore as well, um, adding some signage to Highway twenty-five, um, but kind of due to, to the restrictions in the right of way, pretty much the closest we could get signage is about where our, our big, um, pillar is out there right now, or the monument sign is out there right now. Um, so most of our directional traffic will actually, directional signage will actually be off of Corey Avenue pointing in two different lanes and then internal, so.
Mm-hmm.
Any updates on the chip?
On the chip? Oh, the, the, um, switchboard for the-
Yes, yes.
Um, the last update I had was, um, middle of October, so-
Okay.
Should hopefully be here in a couple of weeks.
Did they specify a year?
This is, uh, sixteen months, seventeen months, but yeah, if it was twenty-three or twenty-four, I don't know. October sometime. Um, yeah, there, I, I do have, we actually have several projects, just as a company, um, that, we're, we're project number three that's crested over a year, um, and there's, I think about six projects that are approaching a year right now. So it's a, it's a, a mass, mass hysteria right now for, for breaker panels, unfortunately, but.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
I don't have any questions for Chris, but, um, now that things are wrapping up, I don't have a question for you.
Oh.
That doesn't make-
Yeah, yeah, Tim's making you stay. No, you can leave, yes, fine. Um, we talked about doing some kind of an open house again, are we going to revisit that and?
Yeah, I think administratively, I think now that, you know, COVID is in a better place, I think, um, being, getting people back into the building. The only thing I worry about a little bit is the floors, you know, especially at the middle school. I don't know if that's what we really want to show to our public at this point in the condition that they're in. Um, so I think as a BAC group, we need to kind of make, to make that issue gets resolved and then obviously absolutely open it up. We've had a few individual tours and things, uh, folks have just wanted to pop in. I know we put that into our newsletter articles to feel free to reach out and we'll give individual tours, um, so that's been happening. Um, but I, I, absolutely, I think we do need to do some type of open house at some point.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
All right, moving on to the admin reports, we're going to start with Mr. Henning.
Overall, a good start to the school year. You know, we're a very, obviously Kentucky other high schools, just the fact that we're fully staffed is just a huge accomplishment and, uh, and our new staff has really been, has really done a good job. Uh, really, really pleased with, with who we've added and again, just the first few weeks have felt really good. Uh, obviously this week's a really busy week with homecoming, with tonight's coronation and activities various nights and Wednesday night's the Royals night out and then Friday's the tailgate and carnival, football game, and Saturday night's the dance, so. Again, it was kind of nice, it was funny, one of the kids asked me like, what do we need to do for tickets for coronation? I'm like, you don't need to worry about tickets anymore, you know, just all those things that we've had to do the last few years, I'm like, you don't need to worry, it's, anybody can come now, so. Kind of refreshing, I think, for everybody. Uh, a few highlights, college fair last week, we had over eighty students attend the college fair at Dasko Cato High School. Uh, there was, I think McKinnon told me there was sixty-one colleges of different sorts, trade, two years and four years there and I talked to a handful of kids and actually, you know, there was really raw pursuit. I think again, for some of these kids, it's the first exposure they get to actually seeing different things, getting information and, and again, just starting to think more about that option. Uh, and it kind of tied into, I went with the workshop with Tim Joshick last week about C T programming and just as a compliment to our community and all of you guys and, and our school, they were talking about how so many schools are getting rid of, you know, career and tech ed programs and the research that the state of Minnesota has done is that schools that have career and tech ed programs and expose their kids to all types of programming, no matter what college type you choose, you tend to do better at your college and in professions bec- excuse me, because of the skills you are exposed to. And again, something I thought was really interesting because, you know, I think we're here, we're dispelling the myth that only certain kids take career and tech ed. I mean, we have a lot of our kids really going to go to four-year schools or two-years taking, you know, business classes, woods, egg, art and so on. And again, I, and I'll talk maybe more about this next month, because I know we're going to have something to see with the C T programming, but I thought that was really interesting that the kids have appreciated that we do expose them to this and, uh, the school that was there kind of highlighted their presentation, I kind of laughed and they said they talked how they went from two kids, like twenty kids in woods and Tim and I looked at each other a little bit, I'm like, we have like a hundred, so. So I mean, I think it's a compliment to our school district, although we do support those programs. Then lastly, just kind of update, um, and Heidi brought this to our attention, we did have the, the to be continued facilitators coming to workshop. It was up to staff, they wanted to participate in a six-hour training that day and then two additional hours. I think we had twenty-five staff that gave up a whole day. Uh, I was really, really pleased because they didn't have to, I'd love to be at the volunteer and they said that was probably one of the most they've ever had. Uh, they, they had to bring two facilitators out. They're coming out in November to start working with our tenth graders and that's their plan is they work with one grade per year, they usually like to start with tenth grade, because then by the end of, you know, three years from now, they'll have all of our tenth and twelfth graders that get this mental health first aid really, really well received. I know Mr. Gert will talk, the middle school's starting to look at it too, so, um, really, really appreciative of that opportunity and our staff was really enjoying it too, so. That is my update.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gert.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, just real quickly, start of the year, it's been very smooth and just want to thank our eighth grade web leaders, uh, they did a terrific job. We've just got some good leadership in that class of students, helping our fifth graders get ready. Uh, school-wide September, heavily a focus on just welcoming our kids back, building relationships, trying to understand what kids need, taking a lot of different assessments and getting into routines and habits. I just want to say thanks to parents, um, it's just been a very smooth start to the year, so we're off to a good start. Um, to kind of piggyback off of Mr. Henning on the mental health piece, Heidi, thank you, Mrs. Getzko. Uh, after talking to Mr. Henning and some high school staff that were a part of that first aid training during workshop week, we decided to start bringing middle school staff through it. Um, one of our therapists, Katie Mack Gerado, who is from Carver County, is first aid, uh, mental health certified, so she's actually offering the training and so we're going to take again our seventh and eighth grade staff through first and assuming it goes well, we'll kind of carry on with the rest of the staff and get that, um, understanding built out in the middle school, we really need that, so thank you. A couple more really quick things, uh, middle school, uh, we'll probably talk more about this at a future, future meeting. Our focus this year, uh, the primary focus is on our culture and really that M T S S framework for supporting kids. Uh, we've made some good strides in year one, but there's a lot of work to do in terms of academics, behavioral and soft skill work with kids, so really working as a staff on systematically how we approach the training side of it, um, the actual implementation and the monitoring of those supports. Um, we've had, I think, just really good success with the behavior interventionist piece, uh, this first month. Jenna Olson has really been a good intermediate, working with myself and Abby Schute, our social worker, to help kids, uh, with behavior support and teachers and so forth, so I'm liking the model changes that I'm seeing, it is better for kids. Um, lastly, just to kind of wrap up, kind of a funny story here, so first of all, our student council, uh, they put together a, a fun dress-up week for us, uh, this week for homecoming, uh, and, and they're organizing a pep fest for Friday. So just to kind of give you an impression of how middle schoolers think, so the student council put together dress-up days and they threw something out there I haven't seen before. On Wednesday initially, they wanted kids to bring anything to school but a backpack.
Oh.
And I didn't catch it initially and then one of our kids came in and asked if he could bring a wheelbarrow to school. So we quickly changed that to neon day and that's where we're at. So it's just never a dull moment, but just kind of funny. That's all I have, any questions from anybody? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell.
It's pretty trendy that, bring anything but a backpack.
Good evening. Um, we're having spirit week as well, so if you had seen me earlier today, you would have seen me in some flannel pajamas, but I felt like it was appropriate to change for this meeting. Um, our teachers have been hard at work setting up their classroom communities, making sure that it's founded on relationships and also clear expectations for kids. So we've been working all month long on our revised royal expectations and making sure kids really understand that. So it's be caring, be safe, be a problem solver. So this Friday, we're having an assembly where parents are invited, um, where a student, two students from every classroom will be selected to win what we're calling royal recognition for living out that mantra of being caring, safe, problem solvers in our school community. Um, so that's kind of a big thing we're working on right now. And then our intervention is starting tomorrow for academic intervention. So we've been busy assessing everyone and we revised our criteria, there was not a common eligibility criteria across the building from grade level to grade level. So we kind of went and mapped out some common criteria that we then used to identify kids who are eligible and then select those students who are most at need to service right now. Um, we're not getting to everyone who is eligible, but the hope is as we continue to provide intervention with three licensed teachers now and then two reading core individuals that will make our way through and be able to scoop more kids up as the year goes on.
Awesome, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Veal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, from the teaching and learning areas, um, I know that Katie Jo, you were with us for our visioning day here a couple of weeks ago, um, just wanted to let the board know that there's been some follow-up with Impact Lives on that visioning day. They kind of summarized all of our information and, and I know that you guys got a report on this a week or two ago as well summarizing, but, uh, the five guiding principles from that, uh, event came out as empathy, listening, harm reduction, clarity and empowerment. And so now we're working on putting together a district committee to start living out that and start creating action plans and empowering teachers and then hopefully eventually students to start living, um, with the prin- living according to those five guiding principles. Um, during workshop week, uh, we had a local author, uh, author of Building Your Brilliance, Jane Schute, came out and spoke to our staff for an hour and a half on self-care, uh, and by the survey results, I was quite well received from the, from the staff and I heard a lot of good, uh, positive comments from that. So, uh, again, trying to work with our staff and having them take care of themselves as well. Uh, on August thirtieth, we had unit two of letters training, so I know I've talked to you guys about that a couple of different times, but, uh, we had, uh, in-person, live, uh, in the middle school, we had training for unit two, uh, some interesting learning took place and, uh, particularly on some brain development, so here's some participation on the board. So I'm holding in my hand a-
Cell phone.
Cell phone and I'm holding in my hand a-
Cell phone.
And I'm holding in my hand a-
Cell phone.
A cell phone, right? So, but from brain development perspective, right, if you look at the B, the D, the P and the Q, right, we're training our kids that this is a cell phone, no matter how you look at it, and then all of a sudden when we go to start learning to read and sound out things, there's a difference and they have to pay attention to that. And so that takes an awful long time to, for some kids to pick up and catch on to that, and so that's just practice and training and doing some mapping in your brain for that. And so, uh, that was one of the, uh, cool things that we picked up, um, uh, from that training as well as all the, much more of the sequence and order that we should be doing some of those things in. So that was, uh, that was very nice. Um, last Tuesday, we had our first T L A C advisory committee meeting. Uh, we took a close look at the first look at our world's best workforce report, uh, there were some things in there that were, were, uh, not able to have wrapped up and finished, so, um, I'll have that ready for you by your November meeting when we go over that in full force and then I'll get that, uh, committee an update with all the final results and all the final goals in place, um, for our next meeting, which I believe will be in February. Uh, also, uh, the primary, uh, areas of concern and curriculum review will be high school science and high school English language arts. I will be meeting with those two teams, one in the morning, one in the afternoon on October thirteenth and we'll continue the ball rolling with language arts and we'll get the ball rolling with science on that. And hopefully we'll have a couple of, two or three meetings before our February T L A C meeting. And then, uh, finally, um, our district M T S S team will be meeting later this week. Uh, we had gotten together and tried to do a, a little bit of retreat a couple of weeks ago and, and the theme that came through from our committee and the people who are working with our M T S S building teams talked about really working and developing fidelity with that program. So that's going to be our continued focus, is now we, we've started with some things, so now let's continue to work towards fidelity and that will mean, um, working with our, our data and Ms. O'Connell talked about setting up clear criteria and what that means, providing some clear interventions, doing progress monitoring with fidelity, uh, with our interventionists and potentially also with, uh, some of our classroom teachers, depending upon where those kids are falling. So we're just going to keep working on towards fidelity, uh, and we'll be developing that action plan, uh, later, mostly, most of that will be later this week. That's about all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Demore.
Hello and good evening. Um, just some gen- general community updates. We are in the midst of our fall programming, which we're like echoing in early September, um, and we have had a lot of our classes running, which I'm really excited, we haven't had to cancel. We've also tried to really increase our offerings and activities at the C L C, um, by having our community wing open Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday from ten to two-thirty, so, um, community members can use the, the lounge, we've got fitness activities Monday, Wednesday and Fridays, um, so just increasing that programming and then again in the evening, um, offering the free walking, um, pickleball rental and an open gym opportunity for individuals and families to use the gyms at the C L C. We are in the midst of working on the winter-spring, um, offerings, uh, the deadline, um, is October fourteenth and our hope is to have, um, our new catalog out the last week of November, early first week of December, with the registration open on December fifth. Um, our community advisory did meet on September twentieth and we were able to gain some new members to that committee. Um, I'm also, as part of the, um, being on the commission on aging for the city of Watertown, just wanted to let you know that we will be having a return to the senior dinner on December sixth and that'll be from four to six-thirty, if you are interested in helping out with that. Um, for our early childhood programs, EC, EC F E started last week and numbers are awesome. EC, ECFE started last week and numbers are awesome. Um, people are returning to class. We've even had to split classes because they are so large. Um, and we have a couple of new activities, caregiver's connection and the parents helping parents, which is a collaboration with Carver County. So just more opportunities to bring new families into um, programming at Watertown. Um, we had our vehicle fair on September 13th and our kids stuff sale last Saturday, great success. And we are looking forward to our fall harvest party on the 29th. Um, childcare is also going strong. We've got about 134 enrolled and plugging away. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Gronseth.
Hi, good evening. So um, as you've heard from the other buildings, uh, we've had a good start to our school year because we're fully staffed and that hasn't happened for two years. So very happy about that. Um, the classes are going well. Uh, we're really pleased with um, some of our new hires. They're working out exceptionally well and we were very, very fortunate to get experienced um, teaching staff and therapists into our district. So I'm very pleased about that. Um, so far, we've really worked at thinking about what our goals are for the school year and one of them, um, like with our speech-language pathologists, for example, is really helping, helping school teams understand how do speech-language pathologists fit into the MTSS model. And so we had an initial meeting today about how they can present that and share that information with teams because oftentimes um, speech and language therapy um, can be viewed as outside of special education, but it's not. It is very much under the special education umbrella and all the rules and, and regulations have to follow that. So we're going to be helping teams with that this year. Uh, we're also going to be working on identifying reading strategies and interventions, um, the tools that special education staff can use um, with their different, with students with different disability areas. Right now, we're using, our staff are using multiple um, tools and materials and I really want to get to focus that we're using current research-based materials with our students and not just something someone may have heard from their friend that was a really good activity. So we're really going to work on identifying those. And then the last area we're really going to focus on is improving our um, inventory of assistive technology devices and materials within the school district. And so um, I'll be putting together a group working on that and then really dedicating some of the money that we have in our, our funds that we have to spend by September 2023 and using some of that money to purchase additional devices, materials, environmental controls that can be used with our students in our programs um, in the district. And I think we can really um, use that money in a really nice way where we wouldn't have it any other year. So um, we'll be using that money well, I believe. And that is about it. Are there any questions?
Um, I'll just let you know that um, the foundation.
Yes.
Has some dollars set aside specifically for special ed.
Perfect.
So as you're putting together a budget, just remember that that's an option um, for some additional funding for those assisted devices.
Okay, that would be good. And they were, I mean, they gave um, Connie Irvine a wonderful grant last year.
Yeah.
Which was so appreciated by our transition program. So yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Last but definitely not least, Mr. Schuler.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a quick overview on a few items today. Um, in front of you, there's a strategic roadmap, um, visioning process. Um, Chairman Felton and I um, kind of finalized the process with uh, Big River Consulting, uh, out of St. Cloud. Uh, Bruce Miles is the, the owner of that group and, and will be uh, helping us facilitate that um, that process. Um, one of the nice things that we felt uh, in his presentation was that he understood that we are looking for a, a revision, not a total revamp, if you will, of our plan. And I think he understood that uh, very clearly on what we needed. Um, excuse me. A couple of the things just to note. Um, so on this timeline, the first thing that will happen is in October, we are looking at, again, this is a tentative schedule, but October 10th, we're going to be putting out a, a survey to all of our parents, um, with two pretty simple questions. You know, number one is truly what are some of the great things that are happening in the district? And number two, what are some things that we can continually improve on, uh, moving forward in the next five years? So uh, two basic questions, but just listing two or three things each of those. So we'll be asking our parents to give that data back to us, that survey data. Uh, Mr. Miles will actually be collecting that data, so it's not coming to us. It's going to be coming to him. Um, I think that'll be a really good process. He'll summarize that data, get it back to us and then we start the process. Um, before I get into that, uh, he'll be training our admin team and a few other select staff members, um, some teachers, paraprofessionals, um, admin assistants, um, to be a part of this leadership group. That leadership group will be trained, um, probably about a 90-minute training on the 27th. And then we jump into actually meetings with each of our staff. So the middle school, high school, uh, elementary staff and C, um, CLC staffs will all have an opportunity to kind of weigh in basically on those three questions as well. What's going well? Uh, what are some areas we need to improve on? And that, and plus they'll be able to see some of the data that came back from the parent group as well. So um, uh, we'll be leading uh, those groups through that process. So our, our admin team will be leading that piece. Um, once that information is compiled, uh, Bruce kind of comes back with us. Uh, and then we start compiling that and putting our plan together. And our, our goal would be, and before I jump ahead, we'll have a community input session as well. Right now, it's scheduled for the, the 15th. Um, and again, that'll be at 6:30 in the cafeteria, high school, middle school cafeteria. So we're putting out word to, to invite folks in for that as well. Uh, we will need some board participation on that. Um, we'll keep you posted on, on what we need there. Uh, but the 19th is kind of when we start putting things together. Um, we will have a work session in advance of our regular meeting in December, just with kind of reviewing the results. Hopefully we look at a preliminary plan, if you will, um, so we can start getting our hands on that. And then again, using the month of January to kind of facilitate that and, and um, ask questions and try to put into its final form with approval at the January board meeting of the approval for the new plan, uh, moving forward. So in a nutshell, that's kind of our process. Um, big thing is trying to get enough input from all of our stakeholders and, and that uh, is laid out uh, pretty clearly in that uh, roadmap that you have in front of you. So um, any questions on that process?
Did he give any kind of uh, estimate on time allotment for like that meeting on the 19th? Because that's going to be our board meeting night as well.
Right. So we've kind of said 90 minutes to an hour of time probably. So um, we'll have to see if that works. It could be a meeting afterwards, a closed meeting potentially, but we still want folks to participate in that if they're in the audience. Um, so we just got to fine tune that one a little bit in terms of how much time that's really going to take.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the timing.
5:00 PM.
From 5 o'clock.
Yeah.
Is, is an hour going to be enough?
Right. Yep. Good point.
That's why it's tentative.
Yes.
Bringing it to the attention.
Any other questions?
Question on the survey. You mentioned it's a two-question survey. Is this an open-ended? People are going to fill in whatever they want? Or is there going to be any thought-starters?
No, just open-ended. So that's the way it's structured right now.
Okay.
I have a question about the timing because as we know, we'll have a few new board members oncoming possibly. Um, would we be, do we have to approve that on the January or could we delay it maybe a month so that the newbies or returning can review that as well, uh, all the information versus just approving and they have it?
Yeah, I guess one of the things that, you know, once the election happens and we know who the, the winners are, um, we can certainly loop them in in the process at that point. Um, and I, and I would do that anyways. They'll, they'll get the, you know, the Friday report from me each week, you know, all that'll be along with it. Plus we do some of that onboarding around that time too. So I, I'm pretty confident that we can get them up to speed rather quickly and be able to provide some good input too. So.
Thank you.
To Tim's point about the time, would it make sense to add a second workshop to our organizational meeting in January? That's typically a short meeting.
The organizational meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously there's not a ton of time between that and the 23rd, but if we did a short work session on the 19th of December to kind of kick things off, get it pointed in the right direction.
Mm-hmm.
And then at the organizational meeting, we can do a second workshop that's kind of a final review. Let's talk about it, whatever. That gives the new board members an opportunity to weigh in.
Good idea.
Right.
That's a great idea.
And then the 23rd can just be a.
See, this is why we brought it to you guys right now.
Yeah. Yep. Great point.
Eight heads up better than two.
It's because he moved spots. The good ideas just.
I'm down here by Lisa. She's, she was whispering in my ear.
[Laughter]
Now, thank you for your input. Now, that's very helpful. Any other comments? And again, we'll keep you uh, posted on, on any changes. Obviously there'll be some participation that we'll be looking for as well from some board members. So um, thank you.
Well, the uh, community input session, would we provide like childcare for that or?
Yeah, that's interesting. Um, Bruce brought that up. He, I think his mention was feed the folks that come.
Yes.
Um, he said, put a pot of chili on and, and.
And have me serve the chili. That's why his words were.
Hunter put on his apron.
Funny.
But, you know.
And hairnet.
Yeah, exactly.
That is something. Feed them and provide childcare. Right. So we'll, we'll work on that. Mm-hmm.
We have a little bit of runway there. Still try to figure out some of the logistics, but.
Sure.
Get that shell.
Cause that's a good NHS opportunity.
Absolutely. Moving on, just another quick note. Um, I know last month, we had a little discussion about substitute teacher pay. Um, Ms. Raider did a really nice job of collecting some more area data from some of her uh, finance directors across the area. Uh, and we, uh, right now at $150 a day, um, are right at the top. Um, some of the areas, the groups that we talked to were, um, TCU was 150, uh, Southwest Metro, uh, 145. Bell Plain, um, is doing that, kind of that similar program with Jordan in terms of you work five days, you get that sixth day essentially. And for that bonus day, if you will, uh, Waconia was 130. So we're, we're more than them. Uh, Buffalo, Hannah, Montrose, 150, Delano, 150, New Prague, 150, and Northern Young America, I believe, is 150 as well. So we're right in the range there. Um, and uh, feel like that's a, that's a pretty good number right now to stay competitive.
And remind me, are we doing a bonus pay for consecutive days?
We are not.
Okay.
We put it to 150.
Yeah, I, we bumped it. Yeah.
And then lastly, and you've noticed, we have not had program reviews over the summer. We're going to kick those back in, in starting October in kind of a different way. Um, we're going to highlight our CTE program. Um, and we're really excited about that with the new equipment, um, that we've talked about over the last few months here. Um, Mr. Joss X has been nice enough to uh, provide some time in advance of our October meeting. Um, so probably like 4:45, 5 o'clock timeframe where we'll come in, uh, get to see all the equipment in use. He has some students coming in to demonstrate. Um, and then um, you know, spend an hour of time just kind of observing, asking questions. And then we would transition back down here for our regular meeting. So um, I think we're excited about that. I think he's pretty excited too, to show off his, his equipment. And uh, it would just be too hard to have him do it here. Just want to do it justice. Um, so you have to get the moral hands-on experience. So.
Can't bring the wood lathe here, right?
Can't bring the wood lathe into, into the district here. And lastly again, I just want to say it's been a great start to the year. Again, thank you to staff and students. I want to highlight too, our custodians. I think you can really tell that we're fully staffed and the consular side too. I think our buildings looked really good to start the year and continue to look good, uh, even as students have come back and, and, and so I just want to give a shout out to our custodians for really, um, you can tell that they're putting a lot of pride into the work and they feel good about the fact that they're fully staffed and uh, you can tell. And I know Mr. Gerton and I have walked into middle school a few times and both have gone, wow, it looks really good. And at the end of the day at 2 o'clock, it's uh, it's cool to see. So thank you to our custodians. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Schuler? All right, moving on, any board member reports for the last month?
Um, I was not able to make the marketing communications, um, committee meeting, but I did um, make it to teaching and learning and um, it was great. We got the uh, world's best workforce kind of update, although it wasn't totally complete. So we did kind of talk about maybe not quite meeting um, right away in September, but pushing that off to, you know, October or November so that we can have the whole, you know, full picture. Um, and then that way it's not such a large gap between that and then our February meeting. So um, and then we are also looking for potential new community members to join because we have some on the invitation list, but don't always make it. So.
I was at the um, marketing communications meeting and we're um, kind of changing focus from our, the, all the branding work that we've done. Well, all the branding guidelines have been updated and skinny down a little bit to a better version. Um, but now really talking about communication planning and how can we show up better in the community and uh, with a focus on retaining and also bringing in uh, new um, students uh, and families to the district. So uh, that's really where our time and energy will be, um, will be forward. Any other changes to that statement, Mr. Schuler?
Go, you're right on. Yep.
And then uh, the Watertown Mayor Education Foundation, uh, as we've been talking about, they have a big event. October 8th is their big denim and diamonds. It's going to be here in the community center. Um, they are almost sold out. They just have a few, I think, single tickets left, which is great. They'll be auctioning off that side-by-side, which they've done. So I think they're, they've really put together a very nice event. So if anybody's looking for something to do that evening, uh, I'd grab a seat if you can.
Come by them for me. I'm at the district office.
There you go. Go see Heather Hune.
Anybody else?
Southwest met on Tuesday. The uh, two important conversations. One, we authorized um, Darren and uh, finance director to negotiate a possible purchase of.
Not this Darren.
Other Darren.
Darren Curmas, yes.
Yes.
Just making that clear.
[Laughter] Possible purchase of uh, East Union Elementary School, which would be perfect. Uh, the other thing as well that um, other Darren really brought up was the fact that he does have uh, some leftover funds for LTFM that could be applied towards the purchase as well. That has to be used by June, uh, which would really be a nice thing to do since um, purchasing that facility. So we gave him the okay and he did also go through um, the superintendent list. So everyone is aware and we're all on board for that, which was very nice. And then the other thing, um, that we also spoke about was our strategic planning. There are a few, um, the decisions were either to uh, use some of the superintendents to decide what we'll be doing. Now, of course, as you know, it wouldn't be all of them. So we actually might go with um, outside um, person, just like uh, we are. So we have a few candidates. There's going to be some interviews on the 13th of October that are going to be Zoom. So we can look at them and if we can't make it, there's also going to be the replay on the 18th. So um, hopefully we'll have some good direction because we've never had a, a strategic plan and Southwest is definitely different in that you can't really say, well, everyone needs to graduate. So a lot of them are here because they're having issues with that. So they definitely need uh, some guidance as to the planning for that. So for goals, so that'll be good. And that's it.
I think so.
Had a busy week last week. Started with uh, finance committee on Monday and went over uh, Ms. Raider's correct presentation, um, with the finance committee and, and discussed it in a little, in much more detail than uh, we got into tonight. Um, Tuesday, we had the community education meeting. Um, as uh, Ms. Dimler said, we had a whole bunch of new faces.
Good.
Um, and that was fantastic to see new voices, new, yeah, new faces. We have one right in our audience tonight. Um, what is it? Mr. Voloski?
Yeah.
I'm horrible with names. So um, and, and you know, wanting to get more involved. And I love seeing that. So hopefully it'll turn over, you know, kind of to the, the teaching and learning, you know, people, more people will get involved with uh, the school district. And then on Wednesday, we had the BAC. Um, and the good news of that is it's sort of, as um, Mr. Vogel presented, things are kind of coming to a head now. So I think, you know, eventually we're going to have less and less of those meetings, hopefully while you're still.
We've already, we've already really cut back just by going to once a month instead of every two weeks. So that's been. of every two weeks, so that's been, there just isn't as much to, to go over, and contractors are a little better now, so.
And we're running out of money, so. That's always part of it, too. Projects have to get in sometime. And that's sort of kind of the, the updates that I had. Anybody else? All right, hearing that, is there a, or hearing nothing, I should say.
I made a motion to adjourn.
There we go.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Mr. Thompson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 7:06 PM.